Call the regular planning and zoning meeting, uh, planning and zoning commission meeting for February 11th. Order, will you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a roll call, please.
Carrie.
Oh, I'm sorry, here.
Walton.
Here.
Kimball.
Here.
Schlathauer.
Here.
Wilhelm.
Here.
All right. John, do we have any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, or presentations?
There's none.
Okay. Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
Yeah, under the consent calendar, we're gonna move action item C to the section three of the unfinished old business.
Okay. And so we have declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, or site visits. Does anyone have any of those to declare tonight?
Nope.
Okay, I have a conflict on the Crown Reserve subdivision reason decision, which has been moved to the old business, and so I will be recusing myself for that action item. Onto citizen issues. So this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to speak to the commission.
We have action items, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, consent calendar. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, consent calendar.
So we have action items, the meeting minutes from the January 14th, 2025, planning and zoning meeting workshop. And we have action item B, which is the meeting minutes from the January 30th, 2025, planning and zoning meeting.
Okay. Everyone had a chance to review those items? Perfect. Motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Walton?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schlathauer?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, will the record please note that Commissioner Schreiber has joined us? Okay, now, onto citizen issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on this agenda or on any potential future agendas. Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak to us? Seeing none, we will move on to old business, which is?
Yes, under old business, we have the Crown Reserve subdivision reasoned decision, file number SUBD 24-5. It was brought to our attention that condition six, as proposed to you, still had a reference to Balmoral Drive, but when you look at the minutes on that in the motion, the motion excluded Balmoral Drive, so it would be a request to approve that with, um, removing.
Strike through.
Yeah, the strike through on Balmoral.
Does that make sense, commissioners? So when we had the meeting on that, I inadvertently, when I typed this up, had that inclusion of Balmoral Drive, although we specifically removed that when we approved it last month. So this is an error in condition six. It should not reference Balmoral Drive, so I would ask that the commission approve the reasoned decision as drafted with the strike through on condition six to remove the reference to Balmoral Drive. That's consistent with the previous decision.
So it'll just, it'll have the same wording, but Balmoral Drive stricken from it?
Yes. Alternatively, we could kick it for another month and bring it back.
Yeah, that's fine.
With me deleting that.
Just clarify.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Uh, yes, yes, please.
I'll give it a try.
And again, Ray is recusing himself on this one.
No, I don't. Um, I move to approve the Crown Reserve subdivision reasoned decision, file number SUBD dash 24 dash five, as amended.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Carrie?
Yes.
Kimball?
Recused.
Oh, that's right. Schlathauer?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber? Walton?
Yes.
Okay, we're on to our action items. Public hearings tonight. So we have some people out here for the public hearings, it looks like. So we have, all right, three public hearings. Uh, there are signup sheets in the back, in that corner over there. If you wish to testify, please fill one of those out and bring it down. And you will have your opportunity to testify at that point in time, um, as appropriate during the public hearing. Let's see, I'll open the Briner annexation Spiglass subdivision, file numbers ANNX 24-7 and SUBD 24-9.
Good evening, commissioners. John Manley, planning manager here at the City Post Falls, presenting the staff report for the Briner annexation in Spiglass subdivision. File numbers ANNX 24-7 and SUBD 24-9. So the owner is Chris Briner and the applicant is Dobler Engineering, and Dobler Engineering is present this evening. The requested action is for you to forward a recommendation to city council regarding the requested single-family R1 zoning on the approximate 4.63 acre annexation. To note, that's what the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission is, is to forward a recommendation of the annexation, of zoning to city council, not to decide on the annexation, and the city council will take that recommendation in consideration as part of the annexation review. The subdivision request is for the 16 lots on 4.63 acres. What occurs here is it's conditionally approved on annexation, so you would re-review it. You'll see one of the conditions of the subdivision would be subject to ultimately the city council's decision on annexation. If they deny the annexation, then in return, the subdivision would be. So the location of this is on the southwest corner of Pole Line and North Maguire Road at this location here. Surrounding zoning, you can see in the city off to the east side of Maguire, the dark yellow, that is other single-family R1 zoning just on the east side of Maguire. The lighter yellow, a little bit further out, that's the R1S, that's that more rural, single-family subdivision zone in the City Post Falls. Surrounding the property on the north side of Pole Line and in the county, those are larger, single-family lots that are in the county. They're egg properties in the county, the five-acre egg lots. Looking at the site itself, it currently has a single-family home on it, and it is over the Rathron Prairie Aquifer. The water provider for this area is East Green Acres Irrigation District. Wastewater would be provided by the City Post Falls, and it's denoted in the staff report that there is ability to serve it, but there's also an additional note that the existing septic system would be required to be abandoned, and the remaining structures to be connected to the city's infrastructure. Looking at the traffic, you look at Pole Line Avenue, it is an arterial roadway, with Maguire Road also being an arterial roadway. With annexations and upon development, we get, um, the right-of-way and easements as part of the annexation, and through development, that's where you get the improved roadways, the urban improved ways in Post Falls with new development. Future land use, you can see here, this location, the site here denoted in the red, that it's in this transitional, that's his blue area. And the comp plan, when we set up the comp plan, it was, there was an area denoted, we didn't know the timing of the transitional area, when that would be asked for becoming part of the city. And so the theory at the time was you would punt to the focus area on how these lands would, in time, transition to being incorporated into a municipality. Looking at the West Prairie focus area, the area that this is at, you can see it here, located just on the fringe of it, right there in that, within what you see here, which these are commercial nodes. Um, I, you saw, like, in the previous slide where we noticed that it was on the intersection of two arterials. When we did the comp plan, those were denoted as potential locations for neighborhood commercial, commercial node opportunities. Doesn't necessarily mean they had to be commercial properties, but because of the nearby infrastructure, it could support that potentially. Looking at the focus area itself in the context of the future land use, the folk, the West Prairie does note, though, that the mixed residential is envisioned between Maguire Road and Corbin Road with higher densities near commercial corridors and arterials. So there is some context within the West Prairie that mixing a residential at various densities would be an opportunity for someone to ask for. Looking at, uh, goal seven, I'm not gonna go over all the goals that were in the staff report, but one cited here is you're looking also for looking at different types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls to support the community's needs. Um, Post Falls has about 70% of the housing in Post Falls is something other than multifamily. So getting additional land develops that's not multifamily does assist the, the needs of the community. Looking at policy 15, ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through the provision of diversified housing. And we do get, in single-family, different various types and sizes of homes in Post Falls. Policy 33, more deals with the annexation and implementing the transportation plan and enabling the completion. And that's where, uh, council will look at this as the potential, the right-of-way and easements that we would get, and then the development, getting those improvements, meeting that policy point. Goal one, grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. Tying policy two to that, that you're applying and revising zoning based off, we're gonna look at the future land use mapping, which we looked at that as being the transitional, the focus area, looking for mixed residential. Compatibility with surrounding land uses, going back to, on this slide here, generally speaking, you have other R1s to the east, which staff would see as being compatible as these lands to the west transition from being county properties to being more urban properties in the future, because that's the point of a comp plan, you're looking 20 years in the future. More than likely, those would be compatible with that, as well as they're not deemed as being incompatible either, the R1 with, uh, five-acre egg lots either. Looking at the infrastructure and service plans, there's comments in the staff report, looking at the ability to provide for that, and also looking at the roadway classifications of both Pole Line and Maguire would be incompatible with the proposal either. So here's the zone change criteria that you look for. Is the proposed zoning consistent with the future land use map? We're looking at the proposed zoning district and the goals and policies, and I'll also touch on here in a bit is, does the proposed zoning create a demonstrable adverse impact? So we send out public comment for that, and we see, we get from public agency a public comments on any sort of proposals to, um, shed light on that criteria. But right now, I'm gonna go into the subdivision review criteria aspect. Do you have any questions for the proposed zoning and the annexation at this point?
So essentially, we're looking at, uh, annexation, zone change, and subdivision.
Well, you're really looking at recommending a zone to city council as part of the annexation request. So that's usually, that's one item. The second item is, now, supposed that the, if it was approved, right, now we're gonna go through the subdivision.
Okay.
Does the, the review criteria in the proposed subdivision meet the spirit of the asked R1 zoning?
Got it. Thank you.
So here's the Spiglass subdivision plan. You see here, here is Pole Line Avenue along the north. You see Maguire Road to the east. You can see the right-of-way dedications that was inferred. You see the lot pattern. They do plan to build this, as of right now, the Starlight Street going north-south, allowing that potential connectivity to the south at some future annexation, uh, whenever that property owner would ask. You also see the plan to extend easterly and provide another connection easterly. That's generally how we look at infill areas that are developing, or even on the fringe, that as they develop, that hopefully, long-term, it looks like a master-planned community with good interconnectivity. First criteria is, are there definite provisions for the water supply system inadequate in terms of quantity, quality, and the type of subdivision proposed? You saw in exhibit A6, there was a will-serve letter from the water provider. Second criteria, you're looking at municipal services for sanitary sewer. You see here that the, there is adequate capacity to provide service to the subdivision. Proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, is the third criteria. You can see here the comment that replicates what was in the staff report, looking at Pole Line Avenue being proposed as a three-lane road. And it's, um, it's required to meet the transportation plan and to meet the projected 2035 traffic volumes and distributions. Maguire Road is proposed to be a five-lane road, and you see a same similar comment on that. Criteria four looks at the subdivision, is there any soil, topographical conditions that may present a hazard on the proposal? It's cited that it is over the Rathron Prairie Aquifer, and there was no known soil issues that were brought up as far as whether through a public comment or has been known to the city. The fifth criteria is the proposed subdivision zoned for the proposed use and is it conform with the requirements found on the code? It is contingent, so it's eligible for annexation and it's, uh, for subdivision. And we looked at the lots, and the lots are in conformance with Title 17, which is the subdivision code, and Title 18, which is the zoning code. Criteria six deals with developer make, paying its fair share in the cost of development, basically growth paying for growth. This is generally done through impact fees that are paid at the time of the issuance of building permits. They pay for parks, public safety, streets, fire, EMS, and water reclamation facilities. Here's the agencies that were notified for both, um, annexation and subdivision. We heard from the school, they're remaining neutral at this time. Cooney County Fire and Rescue, they review at the time of permitting. You see the other entities here, the police, they were neutral. Phillips 66, the YPL, they're a gas pipeline, no utilities are in the vicinity. DEQ, they had no comment, and ITD had no comment. And then there's that sixth criteria consolidated, and then there is the zone change criteria. So the public can notice, once again, that's where it starts talking about the demonstrate, demonstrable adverse impact, and none were cited. Any questions for me on the subdivision?
Any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, have the applicant come up, give us a presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Appreciate the opportunity. Just a quick comment, it's not a zone change, it's zoning with annexation, uh, which is important, two different processes. So staff's done a good job of capturing the important facts. I simply wanna just touch base and provide a little bit more flesh to the bones, as it were. Uh, future land use map, so we have transitional, staff pointed that out, transitional, uh, anticipates a little bit higher density. And then on the edge here of the slide, I think it's business commercial. And that, again, kind of explains why are we transitioning, because we're going from, uh, a lower-density residential zone to a business commercial. Comp plan anticipates that with a transitional zone that allows for a little bit higher density. Uh, I'd point out that, does this have a little pointer, John?
The mouse, the cursor.
The mouse? Oh, there's a mouse. Okay. This is all R1, uh, the Greenstone property. Uh, and this is, part of this is R2. So, yeah, we feel that the R1 is not, not only compatible, but it fits in with the neighborhood, and certainly the R1 is identified as a transitional, uh, enabling zone for the transition. And that means, well, John can probably explain it better than I can, but basically, in the comp plan, you have the different, um, land uses, and each one of them has a zoning that will facilitate or fits in to that plan. So in the transitional, the R1 zone allows a little bit, uh, well, it's really not even higher density, but it's certainly more dense than the R1S, uh, less dense than the R2. So it's an enabling zone for the transitional, um, area. The layout, you've seen that. We provide access to the south, uh, and the importance of that is to limit the access, access I, I think that's the plural, the accesses on to Maguire, uh, which is one of the city's goals on, on arterials, to limit the accesses. Uh, we've gone over proposed zoning as R1. Areas 4.63, we're looking at 16 lots. There isn't, uh, an existing residence on the site that'll be removed, and the septic will be, um, removed, and that house will be hooked directly to sewer. Minimum lot size, you, you can see the numbers. Uh, I would point out that it's, that minimum lot size is what we see in these developments. How come it doesn't show up on the screen?
Yeah, I know, we're noting that. This is kind of a new interface, but yeah, it's clear that the mouse is not being shown on the screen anymore.
So you can see the, the lots that have already been platted in the R1 zone on the east side of Maguire, and then the darker brown, south of Midway, those are even smaller lots than we're proposing. But the lots that we have are very much similar to the lots that have been platted in the R1 zone on the east side, further to the south. Uh, yeah, compatibility or extension of the traffic, uh, this, the two street subs to the south. Uh, additional right-of-way, as John pointed out, that would come with the annexation for both Maguire and Pole Line. Just simple there, transportation, just look at some numbers. 16 homes per the manual uniform traffic control, and the, uh, trip generation manual anticipates 151 new trips in a day, which translates to 16 trips in the peak hour, one trip every four minutes. Access to Maguire will be restricted or prohibited on the final plat. I think that was even a proposed condition in the subdivision. And then, as I said, we dedicate additional right-of-way for, um, Maguire and Pole Line, as well as construct all the improvements in there, in those, in that right-of-way, which includes, you know, well, I think I say it a little bit later on, here we go, utilities, provide for public utilities. Sewers in Maguire, water is a little bit further north, but we bring it down Maguire into Pole Line. Uh, and I think you can see sewer, those little starred circles, and water's got the little taps on it, so you can visually see where we are. And those all have capacity. Schools, schools in the area. Just an interesting note that the Urban Land Institute has done a study that shows that a typical single-family generates only .6 children. I, I don't know what a .6 child looks like, but you could do the numbers. It ends up being, this project would generate 10 new students. So I think it's just, and this isn't gospel, but it's a, it's a statistic that's out there for us to refer to to get some idea of what impact 16, technically, it's only 15 new homes, but we'll say 16 new homes would, um, would bring. Parks, five parks within three-quarter mile radius. Land use, I'm not gonna elaborate. I think staff did a good job of going through the comp plan goals and policies. Uh, just touched, you know, we've just basically made the same observations, public services, open space. Community design character, lots are similar to what's out there now. Again, you've seen this, the subdivision valuation, provisions for water, sewer, right-of-way, land. Back to the annexation and subdivision two, as to, does this create a detrimental impact? Well, in addition to building and widening Maguire and Pole Line, which will have, um, both of them will have multi-use paths on our side of the street. Uh, curb, stormwater treatment, all of that comes utilities. We have, uh, we pay sewer and water cap fees. You don't get the water cap fees, but you get the sewer cap fees, and that's to upgrade sewer facilities to keep pace with, um, you know, the incremental increase of sewer flow from this project. And just look at some of the numbers, $125,000, $100,000 for new, to new parks and facilities, $20,000 for new public safety facilities, $50,000 for new street construction, $22,000 for multimodal facilities, which are, um, you know, like paths, things like that, off-site, and then $22,000 for new fire and EMS facilities. So it's, you know, the subdivision brings to the city not just the improvements and widening of the streets that abut it, but it, it best, it pays its own way and then some. Conclusion, we think that it meets the subdivision criteria. We think the R1 zone is the appropriate zone for annexation, and would request the planning commission make that ruling.
Any questions? If there are any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
We will open the public testimony. I believe we'll start with, any application, or, it'd be four, right?
Pardon?
Do we have, do we have any at all?
Not for this one.
Not for this one, all right. So no need for rebuttal. Do we have any questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Oh.
I was close.
Isn't Maguire getting shut off at the end, there at 53 soon?
I don't know the exact status on that. Rob Paulus might be able to comment, though, on the current plans for that.
Just for traffic things.
Members of the commission, Robert Paulus, city engineer. So with the Pleasantview interchange project that's currently under construction, when that project reaches completion, which will be in about three years, Maguire Road would be planned to be closed at, as across Nicket to Highway 53, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I guess I'll have one. Um, the transitional zone, or the transitional area, is open to many different zoning designations. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
R1 just happens to be one of the ones that is included in the variety of zoning.
Yeah, it was alluded to, um, a couple times in different ways. So you're transitioning from Maguire to Pleasantview, and you did see that business commercial referenced by the applicant. And so if Pleasantview develops as more of an industrial, commercial-type development, that you'd see, like, just kind of envision Sullivan Road north of I-90 between Trent. Okay, so that would be potentially a look and feel of Pleasantview. And so then you're transitioning, you know, ultimately, that's all in an urban area. It's all within a municipality, getting municipal services. How does that transition from a corridor that looks like that to R1S lots that are currently in the city, and how do you make that? And so it's broken up within that, those focus areas is transitioning from Maguire in, in entertaining different uses at different densities to make, bring some built environment compatibility circa 20 years from now, potentially.
All right, any more questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Yeah, get the.
Nope.
Yep. Consideration. Reason criteria, there we go, that was them. So, I guess what we'll do is we will tackle the zone change first and do a, talk about it, and go through the reason decision for that, and then we'll go for a motion on that, and then we'll move on to the subdivision after that. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you, commissioners. So, we're, we're considering the zone, the initial zoning recommendation for Bryiner 24-7. Review criteria number one is the proposed zoning district, residential one, consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan.
The transitional area is kind of open-ended, and this is my opinion. It's kind of open-ended, but we do have that specific intersection designated as a commercial node. I'm not sure that the R1 zone follows that. The intention of the, the commercial node.
Yeah, I think the focus area, when it comes to that commercial node, is it says it's a, it's a may. It may be appropriate in that location. I think it's important to remember that designation.
Agreed.
And I do think that the transitional is one of those land uses that, or land use categories, I guess, where we're, you try to kind of match what's next to you a little bit in the city, and try to, understanding that you're going from, in this case, a lower density, a lower intensity use on the east to what's likely to be a higher intensity on the west when it gets to Pleasantview.
Yeah, because we're R1 to the east, and further down Poline, we're going into the business commercial zone.
Right, and then on Pleasantview, a mile away, or a mile away, is going to be eventually, well, it's supposed to be industrial. So, it's undeveloped, but it's zoned industrial.
I'd say it conforms to the surrounding uses and consistent with the future land use map.
Certainly.
Okay, and commissioners, I would note that there was some discussion in that West Prairie focus area of the mixed residentials at various densities, which could be used as a finding to support the R1 designation. The commercial node is an interesting aspect that we discussed earlier. But if we're in agreement on that issue, then we'll move on. Number two, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
It's definitely consistent with some of them. The ones outlined in the staff report, it's definitely consistent with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think in particular, Policy 15, where it looks to address future housing needs. So, that's certainly one of them. Policy 45, amongst others, where we're meeting the transportation master plan with right-of-way dedication, which is really important if we want to keep our, our roads in congestion down. Dedicating right-of-way, so we have turn lanes is really important. Policy 72, which talks, speaks to the conservation of the aquifer, and removing a septic system from above the aquifer is important and meets that policy as well.
Thank you, commissioners. Finally, number three on the zoning recommendation, does the proposed zoning district, again, R1, create a demonstrable adverse impact upon any delivery of political subdivision services? None identified, doesn't seem to be demonstrated. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, so, I think I'll look for a motion at this point with regards to zoning, annexation zoning, or a recommendation to the city council for zoning.
The annexation part?
The annexation part, yes.
I move to recommend approval of Biner, Briner, Biner, Briner, annexation ANNX-24-7, finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and adopting findings and conclusions. I'm sorry, I goes with.
There's.
For the, well, with items one and two, those dedicated annexation agreement, would that be?
So, the recommendation is for?
The zoning, but would I need to add those items to be considered for inclusion in annexation agreement?
I think you can say consistent with the staff report.
Pardon?
You can say consistent with the staff report, Commissioner. And, and again, the final decision on the annexation zoning is going to go to council anyway, so they can address it at that level.
Okay, and adopting consistent with the staff report, with the requested zoning change of R1. Or designation of R1, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Kimball?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Slott Howard?
Yes.
Okay, now we got that item, go to the reasoned decision for the subdivision and the review criteria.
Thank you, commissioners. Again, Bryiner subdivision 24-9, the consideration of these elements is, is what we're discussing here. Number one, that whether definite provision has been made for a water supply system that's adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed.
Yeah, it was Green Acres Aquifer Irrigation.
Yeah, we have will serve from East Green Acres.
Thank you. Number two, same question with a public sewage system.
We have a will serve from the city for sewer, in terms of capacity and location.
Okay. Agreed. Number three, whether the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the city's comprehensive plan.
Yep, they're consistent, and the developers have given up considerable right-of-way there, and will make considerable improvements.
They're also providing connectivity to adjoining properties.
And that, and that connectivity also limits access to Maguire, it sounded like, which is.
Both Maguire and Poline.
Both Maguire and Poline.
Or resident, direct residential access. If conditioned, if, if, as conditioned, yeah. If approved, it's conditioned.
Thank you, commissioners. Number four, any areas of the proposed subdivision involving soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified, and that the uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions?
None have been identified for this property.
True. Thank you. Number five, the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to the other requirements found in this code.
Yes, could be.
As long as the R1 zone is approved by city council and it's annexed into the city, it does, the subdivision does meet the dimensional requirements for an R1 zone.
Okay, thank you. Finally, number six, the developers made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services by paying fees or other offsetting impacts.
The developer will be paying fees.
And again, it sounds like generally, the impact fees assess those offsite issues.
Big fees, big improvements.
Big money. Thank you, commissioners.
Have any more discussion before we go for a motion? Seeing none, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Spyglass subdivision file number, let's see, SUBD-24-9, finding that it meets the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code 17.12.06OH, as outlined in our deliberation, and subject to conditions as, as contained in the staff report, and that we direct staff to prepare written, see, written, see, written reasoned decision.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Walton?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Slott Howard?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay. We are on to our next public hearing, which is the Steckman Annexation File ANNX-24-9. I will open the public hearing.
Good evening again. Steckman Annexation File Number ANNX-249. The owner is Blackwell Homes LLC, and the applicant is Ben Hooton Consulting and Design, and is present this evening. So, what they're asking for here is, as part of their annexation request, a recommendation to city council for the medium-density R2 zoning on approximately 6.7 acres. The location, as you see here, is west of Spokane Street, midway between West Grange Avenue and Prairie Avenue, on the west side of Spokane Street again. Looking at the surrounding zoning of the site, you can see here everything in that darker yellow, this location, that's all R1. You see here, this is a county island, and so, the proposal would be shrinking that county island to some degree. Currently, there is a single-family use on the site. To note, it is over the Rutherford Prairie Aquifer. Water would be provided by the East Green Acres Irrigation District. Waste water would be provided by the city of Post Falls, and there is capacity to provide service to the proposal. And just like the last one, there's a comment regarding terminating existing septic systems. Looking at traffic, Spokane Street is an arterial roadway, and Tennessee Avenue is a local residential street just to the west. With the proposal, you would get that additional right-of-way and easements needed along Spokane Street as part of the annexation. Looking at the future land use, you see here, it's designated as low-density residential. And you can see here that within this, it does entertain all types of single-family residential uses up to eight dwelling units per acre, and an implementing zoning district is R2. One thing I would like to note is when the comp plan was originally adopted, R2 was not an implementing zone. What we did is we removed multifamily as an allowed use, or even in the R2. And so, after we removed multifamily as a potential permitted use in the R2, then we added R2 and did a comp plan amendment and included that in the comp plan. So, now that's on there. Note, though, it does allow for townhomes. I don't know if the applicant is wanting to do townhomes, but that is, but that is a single-family product, townhomes are. So, it was, all that was discussed in those amendments. The project location is, as you see here, it's in that Central Prairie focus area, it's right there. Once again, you see that, that county island. Looking at the comprehensive goals and policies and how this kind of all works together, you see that future land use, looking at some guiding policies within that central Prairie area, you're looking at embracing a variety of housing types and land uses, hoping to maintain quality standards and provide even greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness and connecting neighborhoods to the community trails and nearby amenities. I think the applicant will touch on that a little bit more than I will. I'll mostly focus on these goals and policies, but I do believe that's why they're bringing them together, and they wanted to, they actually asked staff if we can get these on the same night, so they can kind of expand on how these two projects that you'll see after this, Elfers and Steckman, how they work together. Looking at the goal, Goal 7, plan for and establish types of quantities of land uses in Post Falls supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. I believe we've talked about this in some of our workshops, as diversified housing in different zones and different housing types could maybe potentially assist with that. Also, looking at Policy 8, encouraging compatible infill development. I think I've highlighted the infill nature, as well as the county island that you see in Policy 9. Policy 15, ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through provisions of diverse housing types and price levels. Going on to Goal 6, maintain and improve Post Falls transportation network in a pace and concert with the need and plan objectives. And I highlighted some policies on the right there that could tie into that, improving the transportation network. Plan for and protect the transportation corridors from encroachment and preserve adequate right-of-ways for future corridors. So, that's what you'd get on Spokane Street, you'd get that additional right-of-way along Spokane Street. Policy 26, maintain and improve the continuity of sidewalks, trails, and bicycle paths in Post Falls. Think where Policy 26 comes in is where you see that proposal with Elfers and the potential connectivity east-west from Guy Road to this. It provides another residential connectivity, even if it is through a local residential streets between Spokane Street and Guy Road. Policy 33, annexations should help implement Post Falls transportation plans, enabling completion of preserving continuity and circular patterns, which I think I just commented on that. I left those same policies on the right, I kind of highlighted, you'll see more of this on the next. But this is kind of how the two relate. I highlighted the proposed boundaries for the Steckman, and off to the west, you'll see Elfers. And then, here's Guy Road running north-south, and then there's Spokane Street. And so, once this is all developed, you could, more than likely, we'll get, here's that Tennessee Avenue. More than likely, it'll run to the northeast and have some, oh, that's right. Sorry, old habits. So, anyhow, the, off to the southwest of that red box, you can see that Tennessee Avenue, and it kind of, it runs to a dead end just on that southern boundary of that red box. That should continue to the northeast and then have some connection to Spokane Street ultimately, as well as there would be a connection, more than likely, through Elfers to Guy Road. So, here is the zone change review criteria, or the criteria we would use to apply zoning as part of an annexation. Gone over one and two. The focus areas in the future land use map, I've gone over some of the policies that were, goals and policies that were in the staff report. And the last one deals with demonstrable adverse impact. These are the agencies that were notified. The comments that were received were from the Post Falls District, they were neutral. Fire would re-comment at the time of permitting. Police Department was neutral. The pipeline, they had cited no utilities in the vicinity, and both DEQ and Idaho Transportation Department had no comment. Did want to cite some additional comments that weren't in the staff report on this particular thing that were as clear. You had one and two on items that would be in an annexation agreement. We also would cover these items three and four in that annexation agreement, just for your knowledge. We would want to, once again, have a condition about the existing septic systems you see there on three, and terminating those. And then, that condition four, dealing with securing water rights from the purveyor district, if there's one there. These are just typical boilerplate items that are a lot of times in our annexation agreements, but they weren't in your staff report, and so, I just wanted to highlight those. Again, there's the review criteria, we didn't hear anything of a concern for the demonstrable adverse impact. Any questions for me on the Steckman Annexation and the requested zone?
Any questions for Tom?
The properties immediately around it that are in the city now are zoned R1, is that correct?
Yep, I'm going to go to that map, right there.
So, the yellow on that map is R1. Is there any particular reason why this would be R2, other than what we've already talked about in terms of just slightly higher density?
You know, I'll let the applicant kind of delve into why they're asking that for their purposes. For me, as for my role, is just to look at the goals and policies. Are there incompatibilities? Generally speaking, we don't necessarily see incompatibility for single-family homes on smaller lots next to single-family homes on larger lots. We see them as, they're single-family homes next to single-family homes. So, and therefore being compatible.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dan? Okay, invite the applicant up.
Well, good evening commissioners, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Merle Van Houten. I am representing the applicant in this R2 zoning request at 3635 North Spokane Street. I'd like to thank John for his presentation, I felt like he did a wonderful job, as always. So, a little bit about us before we get into it. I'm gonna go fast through these first few slides, because we've got a lot of information to cover. So I am the owner of Van Houten Consulting and Design, a civil engineering firm in Coeur d'Alene. The applicant is Blackwell Homes, who the owner is here tonight. He is a lifetime resident of North Idaho and has other projects here in Post Falls. So this request for 6.7 acres into the R2 zone would be another project that we would look to subdivide this coming year. This is the aerial map that looks a lot like the one John presented. I'm gonna kind of cruise through it, but as he pointed out, we have Tennessee that currently, that ends into the subject property. This provides a continuation of Tennessee up to Spokane Street, where we would provide like a four-way intersection with Brookie. And then we would also, through the Elfers Annexation, which you'll hear next, continue a public road out to Guy Street, and improvements to both Spokane and Guy would occur with compatibility with the transportation master plan. So here's some looks on the ground of the current property. You can see that there are some white vinyl fences to the north and south of a wide-open pasture land. And we have Spokane Street, looking at the crossing of the railroad, two lanes in each direction, bike lane and curb, but we need that pedestrian component to connect north to south, which is currently missing. This development will provide that. Okay, so getting away from the current conditions and more into the goals and objectives of what we're here to do tonight. We are proposing an R2 zone because that helps us feel the need for affordable housing. It's an issue that comes up a lot in front of you, I'm sure, but with this R2 zone, we can go for a density that allows us to bring prices below the median value. This is done in an effort to provide primary homeownership. Our applicant does not want to retain these for his own rental neighborhood. He wants to provide ownership to people who will take pride in it. This will all be done while providing open space within the neighborhood and giving this place a sense of identity, and providing, you know, people who work in Post Falls an opportunity to live in Post Falls. So we want to provide all of those needs that you constantly hear about and that constantly come up in the paper, without, you know, turning a blind eye to the way the city has envisioned, you know, the development of this area. So we're going to keep our density compatible with the city comprehensive plan. We're gonna do this by means of single-family development. So that means, you know, no multifamily, no twin homes, no duplexes, no townhomes, just single-family detached housing. So with affordability and this limited density, this particular location allows us to do all this with a limited impact. We have a direct connection to a major collector road, Spokane Street. This development will utilize that for means of ingress and egress. We don't need to rely on other local residential roads. We, this development will not have an impact on those. In fact, extending Tennessee will kind of relieve pressure on those, all the local roads by giving another means out to Spokane Street. Water and sewer connections are readily available, and this is an infill development, which means that the city is already, you know, serving police, school, et cetera, you know, to this property. So let's look at, closer at the future land use map. This is, as John was kind of alluding to, the blueprint for which, you know, the city has decided this area should grow. We wanted to make sure that what we brought for you, before you tonight, is compatible with this. And straight out of the comprehensive plan, this low-density residential designation says all types of single-family residential uses, up to eight dwelling units per acre, and that the R2 zone is one of the implementing zoning districts. So we took a close look at that when we considered how to, you know, create our zoning request, and we also looked at this focus area of Central Prairie, which we are solidly within. So again, verbatim from the city's comprehensive plan, you know, their envision for how this area will develop. Development and trends focused on addressing single-family needs. With land values increasing, new projects are more likely to integrate higher-density housing with community amenities to broaden their appeal to buyers. And finally, future growth should embrace a variety of housing types and land uses. Maintain quality standards and provide an even greater emphasis on connecting neighborhoods to community trails and nearby amenities. So with all that information, we wanted to bring forward something that can address the need for affordable homeownership. And here are a lot of data that I will try to go through without losing, you know, without being too boring, but it's important because we see it a lot. Demand. We have statistics such as the KNPO's projection that 75,000 people will be living in Post Falls by 2035. Or you can look at the city's own comprehensive plan that says 73,000 new residents will be in Post Falls by 2040. Whichever data set you want to choose from, there's a lot of people moving here. The housing market, however, we have a median home housing price of $526,000. And we are seeing studies from Paha that say 80% of households can't afford to purchase a home in Cootney County. The city's own housing survey, which just came out earlier this year, I believe, says 79% of respondents identified housing prices as a major issue. So here we have a huge demand and prices that, you know, our average residents are struggling to make. So all this is coupled with, you know, cost of living. We have another, you know, statistics from the housing survey that says Post Falls residents need to earn $27 an hour to afford rent. And a Coeur d'Alene press article stating that $93,500 annual salary can afford a $410,000 home. So as we're looking at how to deal with all of these issues, you know, the one example project that we bring to mind is the one that Miracle on Britain, and we actually, you know, have someone here from Paha tonight to talk about this and the similarities to what we're trying to do with our proposal. So at Miracle on Britain, they're targeting households earning $75,000 to $126,000 a year. They're offering homes for $290,000 to $430,000 to get those, you know, people, you know, into a price range, a price point that they can afford. And they're doing it with smaller lots. We're looking at lots, you know, 37 feet by 133 feet, and floor plans of 1,100 to 1,500 square feet in a mixed residential zone. So that's how they achieved it. You know, those first five homes are under construction, and it's been heralded in, you know, newspaper article after newspaper article as a huge success. So with what we're doing, you know, we're looking at home prices that come in under $450,000. And we're doing it with smaller lots and smaller floor plans of 1,300 to 1,800 square feet. So with all that, we think that we can get 47 new homes on this particular piece of land, with dedicated open space in an R2 zone. So let's take a look at closer at density. R1 zone, as I think as Commissioner Schreiber was asking, you know, has a corresponding maxed density of 6.7 units per acre. And the trouble we face with that is, you know, with, you know, that lower density, larger lots, price points get set to a point where, you know, we no longer find them attainable to that population that we're trying to serve. So what we begin looking at is an R2 zone, but we want to do it with the comprehensive plan in mind. So the comprehensive plan, as we looked at in the future land use map slide, has a maximum density of eight units per acre. So this keeps us within the city's, you know, planned growth, but allows us to go slightly denser than the R1. If we go R2 outside the comprehensive plan, then, you know, we have a maximum density of 10.9 units per acre, and we are willing to condition not doing that, that we are gonna max out at eight units per acre. So what can we do with that density as far as the housing type goes? Well, it'll look something like this. This is a simple rendering of what the applicant is envisioning, single-family detached housing, put on the market for primary ownership, not to become a rental community controlled by the developer. So these will have three beds, two baths, two stories tall, attached garage, and less yard maintenance than, you know, which is desirable to some people. So what we guarantee it will not be, as I said earlier, is duplexes, twin homes, town homes, multifamily, these are single-family residences. And we also took a look at cottage homes, we think it's a good piece of code, but the reason we didn't go the cottage home route was because we want to bring in something that has a slightly higher floor plan. The cottage homes maxes out at 1,400 square feet, and we think we can go a little bit bigger and offer a little bit more. So, and again, this won't be retained by the developer. So what does it look like in terms of a layout? Well, it could be something like this. This is one of the conceptual layouts that we're considering. Again, you see Tennessee connect up to Spokane, and then we provide another public road out to Guy. You start to see off to the west the next hearing that we will have after this one. So through those public road connections and a system of private roads and alleyways, we can get to, you know, a density that's within the comprehensive plan, but provides, you know, lots on a scale that become attainable, all while having six tenths of an acre for open space, and that skinny piece to the southeast is actually a multi-use path that could connect Tennessee to Spokane. I'm running a little bit low on time, so I'm gonna cruise through these pretty quickly. Comprehensive plan compatibility. Goal number one, Balanced and Resilient Economy. We're providing single-family homes available for ownership. Let's look at number nine, Encourage Annexation of County Islands. Yep, we are definitely an infill type of a situation here. And number 33, Enable Completion of Preserve Continued, yeah, sorry, of circulatory patterns for road and pedestrian ways. So we, again, we're connecting to a major collector that keeps us from impacting other local roads, because ingress and egress will be coming from Spokane, you know, up to Prairie or I-90, and we'll be providing pedestrian connections, you know, along those. So with all that, we achieve goal number two, Affordable and Efficient Community Services. You know, we get minimal expansion of city infrastructure, improved traffic circulation, and it's already accounted for in the city's planned growth. So with all that, I want to circle back to the goals and objectives that we started out with and revisit them. So affordable housing, you know, have we, you know, provided home prices below median values? We think we can do that by means of the R2 zoning designation. Will they be available for individual ownership? Yes. This is not going to be, you know, a rental community that the developer holds on to all of the lots to turn into a rental neighborhood. These will reach the MLS. Dedicated open space, as that little concept that I put up there shows, 0.6 acres of open space. Connectivity to Places of Employment by Means of Roads and Pedestrian Improvements. And we did it while limiting density to be compatible with what the city has told us their intended growth is for this area, eight units per acre. That can be a condition of approval. We don't want to propose the full R2 10.4 units per acre. We're only looking to do what the city has laid out in the comprehensive plan. No multifamily housing, and, you know, as John mentioned, you know, the term multifamily isn't even allowed in R2. What I mean by multifamily in this slide is twin homes, duplexes, town homes. We're just doing single-family homes, and that can be another condition of approval. Limited impact, yeah, as I've touched on a couple of times, we're directly connecting to a major collector road. This uses traffic on existing local roads, because now Tennessee has a way out other than Grange and Chase. Water and sewer are right there, ready to go, and we, the city's already, you know, if somebody calls the police, it's the City of Post Falls Police. If somebody's sending their kids to school, it's Post Falls Schools. So this is an infill development that makes sense to be brought into the city. So with that, I want to say thank you, appreciate your time tonight, and I'm opening this to questions.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about Tennessee Avenue going down to Guy Road.
Yeah.
I believe that the railroad shut down Guy Road a few years ago. So then there's only one way out of Guy Road now?
I wish, maybe, let me back up a couple more slides here. So Guy Road, yeah, I can't recall the name of what it tees into, Tennessee continues over, and then you have to turn south to get to Grange. And by means of Grange, you can get to either Spokane or Chase.
Okay, and then, because you're talking about Guy Road a little bit, Guy Road is a dirt road, isn't it?
No, it's paved, but it's very narrow.
Narrow road, right?
Yeah.
Does that road get widened?
Yes, it does. So, and that'll come up in the next one. So just a little bit of a backstory.
But that's if the next one got approved.
Right. Yes.
So if it doesn't get approved, that doesn't get widened?
Correct. It'll be improved at the time of development, you know, whenever that may be. And I guess I wanted to touch on that these are two separate applications, that I'm the representative of both applicants, and, you know, there has been much discussion over the last several months about, you know, how these two will come forward simultaneously, and ultimately, it's, the applicants have decided to come forward with largely the same vision, so my next presentation will be largely the same material, so.
Do you have any more questions for the applicant?
That's good.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
At this point, we will have the public talk. All right.
I have a staff question.
You have a staff, please.
I have a staff question. Can we add the?
Conditions.
Condition?
Conditions will be integrated in the annexation agreement, so...
The R1, though, can we add that? That it, because it's, they're asking for R2 zoning, but part of the big sale of this is that they're not going to do any attached, so they won't be doing, so can we condition that, that it can only be detached, I'm sorry, detached houses?
Detached house?
The eight units per acre.
I think that would be incorporated in the agreement. So that, those are contexts that are generally in the zoning agreement, the annexation and zoning agreement. Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but typically we would have like the density caps in the annexation agreement.
Yeah.
Product type in the annexation agreement, and we would go to that agreement. Right now, we would just be recommending the zoning as part of that, but the conditions generally are put at the time of, by the council.
Okay.
Okay, so, but we, so that we have to approve it then as R2 and not stipulation?
I think they can make recommendations to council, can't they?
That they can only do detached homes on it?
I think the recommendation would be, if the commission finds that the annexation or the zoning is appropriate, you say, we recommend, you know, we recommend approval of this zoning contingent upon annexation, and recommend the condition be included for the point, I'm sorry, the eight-acre limitation. I didn't catch the part about the detached homes only.
Well, no, that's what he was saying, that it's gonna be, they're asking for R2 zoning, which would allow for duplexes or things like that, but saying that they are not going to have those. They're only asking for the R2 because it gives a smaller footprint for land.
Yes, they did propose single- Yes, they did propose single-family detached, that they weren't wanting to do duplexes, twin homes, or town.
Yes, and so, and he even said he would, they would be for, for it being conditioned, that, uh, condition added on there.
And I would leave that to the councils. When the council makes that deliberation, they can get that as a concession at that time. I think we can make the recommendation and then see.
I think we can recommend the condition, though, if we want to.
Sure. You can make the recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean, added as a, you know, we recommend, because it's a recommendation anyhow.
Yeah. And again, if the applicant is in agreement with that, if, if the applicant's in agreement with that in the annexation agreement, that's the negoti, that's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Bobby, did you have a question for the applicant?
A little, just a little bit clarification. On that Tennessee Avenue, that, okay, I remember when they shut off Guy Road, railroad. So that Tennessee Avenue, it snakes all the way down into, is it called Whiskey Flats?
Mm-hmm.
So they got to snake all the way down into there to get onto Grange. There, that's, I think that's how that worked. I can't see.
Yeah, so the people on the east side, if, if this got connected to Spokane, provides an additional route to the northeast to Spokane Street that's not.
It's going to extend Tennessee right to Spokane. Potentially what it would do.
I mean, hypothetically, the people of this could choose a meandering route to the southwest to Grange, as you're alluding to, but predominantly, most individuals, I would suspect, would go to the closest route, would go to the northeast to Spokane Street.
Right.
And avoid going that direction, as it would be a significantly slower route.
Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Perfect. All right. Public testimony. So we have public testimony in favor Maggie Lyons, and she is in favor and wishes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. We've got four minutes.
Oh, four minutes. Okay. My name is Maggie Lyons. I, um, live in Hayden Lake, but the property that I'm representing here tonight to talk to you about is in Post Falls. So is, is that adequate?
Just, that's fine.
Great. All right. So, nice to be here in front of you again, and, um, our deepest appreciation goes to the planning staff for the cooperation and support that we've received from the city of Post Falls. As, um, as was mentioned, I represent, um, the organization that is developing Miracle on Britain. And I am pleased to tell you that the progress is good, and we are excited about what we have learned from these applicants and now home buyers. We will have fifteen first-time home buyers in those homes by the end of this year, and the remaining thirteen will be in those homes the end of, by the end of 2026. I'm here tonight really to talk to you about, um, one of the statistics that wasn't mentioned, um, earlier, is that seventy percent of our local workers want homeownership. And we really have very, very few solutions for homeownership. And Britain is not something that is meant to be a standalone neighborhood. It is meant to cast a vision for our community to change the trajectory of the housing for our local workers, because right now, our local workers cannot afford the medium-priced home, period. So what I am excited about with this proposal in front of you is that for two years, we've been talking to professionals, developers and builders, and they have all said, show me, show me how this is done. And I stand before you because this is the first developer builder who has actually embraced this and said, we will partner with you to do below-market rate homes, to preserve these homes in perpetual affordability through deed restrictions. That resale formula protects the initial discount that Mr. Steckman is willing to take to reserve a portion of these homes even further below the price point that they've been talking about, so that those homes can get to even a lower wage earner. So let me tell you who these people are. I have data now for who we're supporting in Britain, and it will replicate throughout this entire community. We have teachers, we have a nurse, we have an electrician, we have a welder, we have amazing, hard-working couples who had given up all hope for owning a home. And to sit with these people and to actually tell them that they're able to buy a home in Britain is truly a privilege. And this will start happening. And so I, I, I'm excited that, that Post Falls has diversity of product mix. The other municipalities do not. These are beautiful homes. They're single-family. We also are doing single-family, although that was originally, um, zoned for town homes. We chose to do single-family. So I guess the bottom line on this is that Post Falls is actually quite visionary in what is necessary and, and set in your code, and that is to retain the vibrancy of the community. And the only way we do that is when our local workforce can live where they work. That is truly the answer to us sustaining the integrity and the flavor of our small-town community, because we are going to grow. We know that we're going to continue to grow. So those really are my comments. I don't know if you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
No?
No.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. You have another one? Perfect. Okay. We have Marilyn Morland, and she is in opposition and wishes to speak. Please come on up and state, uh, your name and address for the record, and you'll have four minutes.
Hi there. My name is Marilyn Morland. I actually live on Tennessee 272. Um, so right where they're talking about...
You walk up to the mic a little bit.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
There we go.
So right where they're talking about, uh, building the road the rest of the way through, I'm on Tennessee, and so I know exactly where they're talking about going. And I can tell you that I live in a neighborhood that's full of small children, and they're always out there riding their bikes, and they play in that vacant area that they're wanting to take over. I will tell you, traffic on Spokane, especially with the Prairie Golf Course, and the fact that we have the little shops there now and the coffee shop, that is really, really bad traffic. And I think cutting the road through is going to create even more traffic problems. And I don't, I don't mean this in a negative way. I get that they're trying to make affordable housing and everything, but I will tell you guys, I have lived in Idaho all my life. I grew up in Nampa, Idaho. And I will tell you, I will not go back home because it has grown so much. Nampa, Idaho used to be a farming community. It used to be like Prairie. And I can tell you guys, you guys are going to ruin it if you allow it to be like Nampa. If you want to see what Post Falls is going to look like in the future, go down to Nampa, Idaho, check it out. Look at the traffic, look at the community, look at the crime rate, the crime rate. You guys are going to create that here. And I moved away from that because I didn't like it. I moved up here because this was like that. Okay? So I just want to point that out. Also, like I said, I'm inopposed of it because of the traffic. Go down and stand on Spokane Street where Prairie is. Watch the cars. Watch how people are turning in. Look at all the children that are there, the school bus stops that are there. And that other proposed land that he's talking about building where the farm is, that's over by me, too. And that's going to cause more traffic. That's all I have. Do you have any other questions?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And it's all for public testimony. Mr. Van Houten, would you like to do your rebuttal?
Yes. Um, no, I, I feel like Marilyn's comments were, were valid. Traffic is always a valid concern with every development. Um, so, you know, the city's transportation master plan, I, I do have it in my slide deck here. Um, I, I just packed up a bunch of other slides here. Let me find that one. There it is. Um, so what the, the city has envisioned is, oh, can't use the mouse, right, um, that, that, you know, Tennessee, at, at the time this property, this infill development is constructed, Tennessee will connect to Spokane, and it will punch through to Guy. Um, I, that is the direction I'm receiving from the city. Um, and, you know, I, I think that we see here, Spokane Street is, is a major collector. It is, it, its sole purpose is to handle a lot of traffic. Um, and I, 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 you know, want to stress that the city's, you know, planning, you know, takes that into consideration. We have, you know, Rob Paulus here, who is the city engineer, and he can speak to that, but, um, I feel like what we're bringing for you, before you tonight, you know, is, complies with the city's traffic master plan and complies with the densities prescribed in the, uh, the land use map of the comprehensive plan. Thank you. Yes.
So you're saying, if I remember right, you're, would only do eight houses per acre?
That's, that's correct.
And R2 allows up to what?
Uh, ten, ten points or something.
Almost eleven?
Right, almost eleven. And R1 is what, six point seven?
Yes.
So you're asking for a, a house and a third acre?
Unions per acre, because, yes, I, because, go ahead.
No, that's good.
Oh, okay. Because, um, you know, in, in trying to, you know, achieve a lower price point, you know, we, we want to, you know, do what the comprehensive plan envisions, which is slightly more than what R1 allows.
So it's no twin homes, no townhouses?
Correct. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. So...
If, if we put the conditions on the R2.
Right. And, and those, those are the conditions that, that, that we're willing to live with. You know, we, we want, you know, just to keep our density within that comprehensive plan, eight units per acre, and, and we want the home product to look like this, you know, that, so.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Merle, for you? Perfect. All right. Thank you. Have any questions for staff before we close the public hearing?
Just a clarification on the R2, if I can ask that. Um, so R2 zoning essentially for single-family is 4,000 square feet per lot, but if you were to do townhouses, it's 2,400.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect. I will close the public hearing. Um, Chris, really quick, just so I understand your direction on the density of eight units per acre and the single-family detached, is it your recommendation that we leave any recommendations with regards to that to city council?
My suggestion is, if they're, if we're, if we're going to make recommendations, let's, can, let's say we're going to recommend approval of the zoning as requested with these additional items to be included in the annex, annexation agreement. So that would be the, the conditions for the point, the eight, eight per acre and the limitations on the, I'm sorry, the...
Single-family detached.
Detached, thank you. Uh, that would be the, I think that would be the cleanest way to include that. Make the recommendation to council, and if they want to include it in the annexation agreement, they've got it right there.
Okay. So that would be similar to, um, the right-of-way dedication?
Mm-hmm.
And the other, one, two, three, four, I believe, is what we had. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just an additional condition like we do all the time, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go to our...
Oh, yeah.
...slides, please.
Sorry. And while John pulls that up, I'll, um, go ahead and begin.
Perfect.
Again, what's considered before you tonight is a zoning recommendation for Steckman, annexation file number 24-dash-nine. Um, we requested R2 zoning on 6.7 acres. Uh, we're looking for a recommendation only on zoning, uh, with no associated subdivision at this point. Uh, criteria number one, is the proposed zoning district, R2 zoning, consistent with the future land use map and the focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan?
Indeed it is.
R...
I said, indeed it is.
Yeah. R2 is listed as a implementing zone. Uh, LDR, so...
Ooh, LDR.
Yeah, it's our low-density residential.
Fancy.
Okay. Um, there was some discussion about the Central Prairie focusing on addressing single-family needs as well, uh, if, if, for your consideration. Uh, number two, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
You know, it meets a, quite a number of the, of the goals and several policies. The, uh, I don't know that I totally agree with the concept that all, uh, single-family residential is compatible with one another. And I don't know that, I totally agree with everything that they're trying to do and that we need it in the city. Um, but is, uh, and definitely there are areas of the city where it's a fantastic thing. I don't know. Uh, part of the comprehensive plan is the Central Prairie. There's a goal for diverse housing types. Is that, did I see that on one of the slides?
Yes, you did.
See, that, that strikes me as incompatible, you know, personally, but...
The diversity part?
Yeah, the, the mixed density.
Okay.
And you're seeing R2 being significantly different than R1?
It's more dense.
Just asking.
Well, for me, if, if it was going R2, straight R2, it would be different. But they're just basically stretching R1. Yeah. Is what I'm seeing. Yeah. Just to get that extra lot so they can pay for their, their building. I get it. Yeah.
So it does address both seven and policy fifteen with regards to future housing needs. That's, that's one of the ones that they hit really hard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with the concept. It's just, is it the right spot for the concept? That's what, that, is it compatible with, with, uh, the surrounding uses? That's the, really the crux of it. I like what they're doing. I just don't know that it's super compatible with what's around them. You know?
There's...
I do like the idea of the conditions.
I think policy twenty-six speaks to the continuity of the pathway on Spokane Street.
Yeah.
And getting that installed upon development.
Yeah, but it would with any annexation. So most of these things, regardless of...
With, with any zone, essentially.
With any zone, they would, you know, so any zone...
Any, any development.
It meets most of these. It's just the crux of it is if it meets, in my mind, is if it, and, you know, some of these are, you know, like, policy, policy eight encourages compatible infill development. It's certainly infill development, but is it compatible infill development? R1 would be, uh, undebatably compatible infill development, but R2, um, I get trying to save the cost. It's just, is this the right area of the city to save the cost? I thought maybe we'd hear more from the, uh, neighboring, you know, folks, but we really didn't, didn't hear much.
There really wasn't any talk about density. It was more, obviously, it was traffic and...
Which surprises me, so maybe it's not the concern I expected it would be.
When I'm looking at the...
I thought there was going to be a lot of pushback on it, but I heard that eight houses, that changes.
When I was looking at the aerials and the zoning maps, and you look at the lot sizes, like across Spokane Street.
Yeah.
Um, both north and south of the, the railroad, those are much smaller lots.
Yeah.
These would be bigger than those.
But they're zoned R1?
Yes.
I think that was a PUD.
It was part of the PUD for the golf course, but even still, I don't think this is going to be that, that much of a stretch in terms of density.
I agree. Yeah.
Do we have any concerns about backing up to the railroad?
I think that's generally a development kind of a thing, not really a zoning thing.
Okay.
I had that thought, because a couple of kids, I think, got killed there at that railroad.
On Spokane Street.
On Spokane Street about five years ago, wasn't it?
Yep.
Seven years ago or something.
Part of the reason I bring it up is if, if this development finishes that pathway along Spokane Street, it could improve that as well.
Right.
And that might be something that's addressed in subdivision when it comes for that. Just a thought.
Well, commissioners, I would also point out, again, this idea of the annex, annexing or considering annexing these county islands is, uh, a goal of the city, is to make sure that these pockets start getting filled in, to get the continuity of the transportation as well. I don't know if that weighs in on this, on this element for your decision as well.
I think it...
I think it does, and I think one of the reasons that we, we emphasize infill development and, and filling in these county pockets, and one of the reasons we actually have implementing zones of higher density is to encourage those, because a lot of them are awkward and kind of weird, oddly shaped. And I think that this is probably one of those awkwardly shaped pieces of property that, um, so having a, a little bit higher density with an R2 sometimes encourages those pockets to come in.
Sure.
And, and if it's to annex, then what is the appropriate zoning designation for the, for that annexation? Obviously, they're not asking for commercial or industrial or anything else, so it is a residential component. I just, eventually, these properties may, or may not be annexed, but what would that look like? Okay. All right, good discussion, thank you. And number three, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any public subdivision providing services within the city?
None has been identified.
Yeah, and then, it was not identified.
No testimony to the contrary, thank you.
Okay. So, before we get a motion, do we have any more discussion about appropriateness and any conditions? Kiwi, what are your thoughts?
I, I agree with what's been presented, I think R2 is the appropriate zone. I think the, the density matches what's across the street from Spokane Street with, with the current homes that are there at the golf course. I think it's compatible.
Okay, pick a show.
Oh, I do too, I, you know, I, I'm for the, adding the condition that it be detached homes only.
Okay. Bobby?
If it had been straight R2, I wouldn't have been for it, but the detached homes and the density they're gonna agree to, I like that.
Okay. Paulus, do you have any more to add?
Um, I think Bobby's right, the, uh...
Better say that.
Those two, those two conditions, I think, are, make it, uh, it's a bit of a stretch, but I think those two are reasonable, so I, I support it with those two conditions.
And Chris?
Same.
Okay.
Want a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to recommend approval, and what's the project name here again? Annex, or it's A, NNX-Dash-Twenty-Four-Dash-Nine, the Steckman Annexation. Finding that the requested zoning meets the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code Eighteen Point Two Zero Point One Zero Zero as outlined in our deliberation, and direct staff to prepare a zoning recommendation to provided, to be provided to city council, including the recommendation that density be limited to eight dwelling units per acre and single-family detached homes only.
Would you also like to include items one and two, shown in the staff report, and three and four is shown by staff in their presentation?
Oh, their, the staff conditions?
They're items to be considered in an inclusion in that.
Let me pull those up.
What, there were four conditions on the staff report?
Yeah, the staff report had two of them.
Right-of-way and...
Right-of-way dedication and...
So that, yeah.
And, yeah.
And, and as well, can I add that into my, my motion?
Sure.
So added to that motion are the two items listed in the staff report, which includes dedications of right-of-way and easements along Spokane Street. And prior to commencement of development, property owners, I don't need to repeat the entire thing, but property owners shall grant to the city or to municipal water purveyor, water rights, et cetera.
And these other two?
And the other two...
They're being four, only detached residential units and...
It's already in the motion.
It was in the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion?
I second.
Commissioner, sorry, we're, we're debating. So there was two additional conditions that were presented. The motion right now by Commissioner Schreiber is to include the staff recommendations as presented in the report, the dedications of the right-of-way, water dedication, there's also an abandonment of septic.
Correct.
And then the two that we've discussed, I think that's the encompassment. So five total conditions to be included in the annexation agreement.
Do you want me to restate it with all that?
Do you mind?
Sure.
Try to, we'll keep it clean, thank you.
Okay, let's, let's start this again. I move to recommend approval of the Steckman Annexation, project number A NNX-Dash-Twenty-Four-Dash-Nine. Finding that the requested zoning meets approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code Eighteen Dot Two Zero Dot One Hundred as outlined in our deliberation, and direct staff to prepare a zoning recommendation to be provided to city council and including the, uh, items listed in the staff report, including, number one, being dedications of right-of-way, number two, being, uh, transfer of water rights, number three, being abandonment of existing septic. And then we're adding to that, number four would be maximum density of eight units per acre, and number five would be detached, single-family residences only.
Well stated.
Beautiful.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Oh.
Kiwi jumps in, all right, Kiwi's got it. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Carrie, yes, Kimball.
Yes.
Butthower.
Yes.
Wilhelm.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Walton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Right, I think, anyone like a break? A little five-minute break here, or do we, are we good to power through?
I'll take a quick break.
Okay.
If I can.
Yes.
Just me.
That all right?
Sure.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
All right, folks. We are back on. So I will open the Elfler annexation public hearing, A N N X twenty-four dash one zero.
All right, well, I guess if we stay out of a normal mode, but we go in this mode here, we can actually see the mouse. So we'll stick with this. So yes, the Elfers annexation, the owner of this is Cooper Family Trust. The applicant is the same as the previous hearing, the Van Houten Consultant and Design LLC. Project location, right here, as you see highlighted in red, it's just the west of the previous Steckman. And it is southeast of the intersection of Fisher and Guy Road. Zoning that you see in the area, directly adjacent to the north and south are additional R-one single-family zone properties. Land use, it's currently a large lot, single-family use on the site over the Rathron Prairie Ocrephor. The water provider, I believe that's incorrect, would be the same as the previous one, as East Green Acres, I believe. I can talk, okay, Rob's nodding yes. Wastewater, city of Post Falls, and as commented in the staff report, the city has the ability to provide for this. Same comment as the previous one regarding the sanitary, I mean the septic system. Traffic nearby is Guy Road is a local roadway. An additional road, a ride, road right-of-way and easement would be dedicated upon development for Guy Road at the time of annexation. There's the future land use map located there. Go to this slide. There's, it's called low-density residential. Just like the last one, same thing, up to eight dwelling units per acre. R-two is an implementing zone. You see the location, project site located there. On this one here, reference the, the same central prairie aspects of looking at diverse housing. Maintain quality standards, provide emphasis on pedestrian friendliness. Looking at different types of quantities of land uses in Post Falls. Looking at, once again, encouraging infill, getting to County Islands. And looking at adequate land for available for future housing needs. Looked at the same goal here, dealing with the transportation network. Same policies, getting the right-of-way and getting the pedestrian connectivity through policies twenty-four, twenty-six, and policy thirty-three with annexation. Looking at this, looking at the interaction of the previous one. You had this one here is Steckman's. This, there is Elfers. Together they're side, but they're adjacent, and if they were developed together, you would potentially get another access from Guy Road easterly towards Spokane Street. Here's the three review criteria, as in the previous one, looking at being consistent with the comprehensive plan, the future land use map. Looking at being consistent with the golden policies and the comp plan. As well as, once again, the, is there a public agency that would cite a demonstrable adverse impact? This is the agencies that were commented or noticed. We had the same comments with Steckman as we did with Elfers. With everybody either being neutral or not being in vicinity of utilities or having no comment. We did have, and you see in your staff report here, and this is for some transparency, we did receive these comments from the public. The public comment that were cited in your staff report. As with the previous one, these three and four, four may be a duplicate of two, just like the previous hearing, so watch out for that when we make our motion. The water rights may already be in the, in your staff report, but we did add the septic system because that one may not be in your, for the annexation agreement for inclusion. So that's the brief rundown of the staff report. Any comments for me on the proposed Elfers?
Go back one slide on that. Is that, item three, would that be required at the time of, that they start the development? So if there's, is there an existing home on this?
Yes, I believe there is an existing home.
And so the existing homes, what do they do? I mean, does this take effect immediately or?
Typically, if there's an existing home, and then is that they can remain, and then at time of development, they usually decommission and go out. Would that be true? That'd be, that's.
There'd be a timing aspect there, it seems.
Yeah, it's generally how that's, that's done.
So that might be more appropriate for subdivision rather than annexation?
Or a reference maybe at the time of, it says at the time of future development, so I mean.
I guess that's, that does it.
Yeah, so we usually include that there for clarity standpoint, but yeah, you're right.
Okay.
As we're looking at this, should we be looking at this completely by itself? Or should we be looking at it in conjunction with the parcel next door, the Steckman?
Well, they're separate applications.
Okay.
Two different owners, so they're, if they were together, they would have been one application applying together. So I think you do have to look at them as a, as a separate application.
Okay.
So this has to stand on its own?
Correct.
Right, all right.
Got it.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none, will the applicant come up, please?
All right, well, good evening again. Back before you, again, Merle Van Houten, four oh one and a half East Sherman and Cord Lane for the record. And so this time, I'm before you making an R-two request for thirty-five thirty North Guy Road. And just to, to kind of go more in depth with, with what I started to explain the first time, we are bringing two separate applications tonight. These are for two separate applicants. I just happen to be the representative for both. Even at the time when we submitted for annexation application back in November, it wasn't certain that, that these two applications would bring forward a similar product. And so that was another reason that they became two separate applications. But, you know, in the, the months that followed and the many discussions with the city and the applicants themselves, it, it did eventually evolve into the same product coming forward for both. So this is largely a cut and paste presentation on my behalf. But it, it wasn't always that way, and like, as, as John said, these are two separate applicants, so it has to stand on its own. So we are now looking at four point eight nine acres being requested into the R-two zone. You know, we have this one fronting Guy Road. It's a little too hard to see, and maybe I have some pictures of the frontage. But Guy Road currently is just edge of asphalt to, to, I don't even think there's a ditch. But, but anyway, to the north and to the south, you have Greenside Vistas and Peregrine Place that, that have a widened road, curb and gutter, sidewalk. And so we would be improving the east side of Guy Road to, you know, provide connectivity to improvements to the north and south. So on the ground level, there's a little bit of a snippet of what Guy Road looks like now on the left. Simply just edge of asphalt, and like I said, it would be widened, curb and gutter, sidewalk, all to the cities of.
Did you say both sides?
Our, our responsibility would only be to one side.
Good.
Yes. So, and Guy Road is classified as a local residential road. But anyway, again, this is, you know, currently wide open pasture land. So, you know, like I said, you're going to see a lot of the same slides here because we wound up landing on the same product and type of development. So our goals and objectives are, are the same. We're trying to bring affordable housing, you know, homes that, that are below the median values. And we want to do individual ownership. Primary residence is not, you know, a, a community where the developer just, you know, retains a bunch of houses for rentals. So, you know, this is going to stay within the same kinds of densities to stay compatible with the city's comprehensive plan. This is going to still be single-family detached between homes, no duplexes, no townhomes. We're, we're coming forward with the exact same concept here. So, so I think it is probably worth just going back through the future land use map and the focus area again. It encourages all types of single-family residential uses up to eight dwelling units per acre. That's, you know, straight out of the comprehensive plan, and R-two is an implementing zoning district. And this one here, we're, bless you, developing trends focused towards addressing single-family needs. And with land values increasing, projects are more likely to integrate higher-density housing with community amenities to broaden their appeals to buyers. And future growth should embrace a variety of housing types and land uses. Maintain quality standards and provide an even greater emphasis on connecting neighborhoods to community trails and nearby amenities. Again, that's just verbatim out of the comprehensive plan. And so those were the guidelines, you know, that were set forth by the city that we are striving to adhere to. So these are the same facts and figures that, that you saw before. I don't, in the interest of everybody's time, necessarily need to go to, through them again. And Maggie with, with Paha did a great job of, of going even deeper into that than discussion than, than I did. So we would be doing the same things here. And again, you know, we want to go a little bit beyond what the R-one density allows, so the six point seven. We want to get to that eight point zero units per acre to help us set a price point that allows more people to enter that, that homeownership market while still complying with the city's density for planned growth. So again, the sixth slide's the same. And here's what that could look like on, on this particular five acres. So we're achieving that density that, that we've been discussing of eight point zero acres. We have slightly smaller lots that front a private road tract and open up to an open space there. I believe that open space is about half an acre. So those are all fronting a, a private road. And then what we, with, what this concept envisions is the public road that connects to Guy and extends to the, the piece that we just heard about would, would have slightly larger lots bordering, bordering the Greenside Vistas. So that way, you know, again, you know, we don't want to, to go beyond the density of, of what the comprehensive plan is envisioning. You know, by just, you know, stacking skinny lots throughout, you know, we want to hold that density and feel that that's provides a good transition to the Greenside Vista subdivision. So with that, you know, we are with the same product, you know, striving to, to achieve this compatibility with the same goals and policies. And we feel that, that we achieve our own goals and objectives in the same way. So again, you know, we can condition this on the same density of eight point zero units per acre. We can condition this on, you know, no duplexes, no townhomes, no twin homes, just single-family detached housing. And, you know, I think that this also limits impact in the same way that, that most of the vehicles that, that, I guess, most of the residents that would be a part of this development would want to get out to Spokane, which is the arterial, and head to either Prairie or I ninety versus winding their way through, you know, Grange and Chase and getting out that way. So I feel like this is a limited impact, and we have water and sewer readily available to us. And again, infill development, which is one of the goals of the comprehensive plan. So with that, I will open this up to any questions.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I just have one quick question. Being that this is, you're doing both the developments, are they going to like complement each other as far as style? Are they both, both going to be completely different or?
Right, no, that's a good question. Yeah, so like I said, it, there was a lot of discussion over the last few months about, you know, what, what these two applicants wanted to do. And, and as, as it stands with me before you tonight, they want to provide the same housing type, the same development and, you know, construction occurring concurrently. Yeah.
Okay, just some larger.
Oh, yeah, so, so, yeah, that, we can go back to that. So, so, yeah, we, this concept and, you know, well, well, you know, I, I wanted to put something before you tonight that, that, you know, was, was representative of, of what this density could be. And what this, this concept does is it takes that, that, you know, the, the same lot type that was on our first hearing tonight and brings it in. But if we would have just continued that along the north there, we would have exceeded that at density of eight units per acre. We were not trying to exceed the comprehensive plan's, you know, vision. So we thought maybe a better thing to do would provide, you know, kind of a transition, you know, as, to the neighborhood to the north.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions for the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing none?
Okay.
Any public comments? Okay, perfect. Okay. All right, so first, neutral wishing to speak is Paul Graham. Mr. Graham, please state your name and address for the record, and you've got four minutes.
Good evening, I'm Paul Graham, I live at thirty-six eighty-two Guy Road. So one clarification, Guy Road is no dirt. There's no dirt. Guy Road is not a main artery, it's a tertiary street. In front of my house, which is the corner of Guy Road and Ashworth, you can drive two cars plus park two cars. When you passed Fisher in front of where they're proposing this, you can drive two cars. No parking, no nothing. We got the rest of Guy Farm still on one side, which they're not going to be able to improve on that side. And then they'll be able to improve on the other side. That's just a, just a comment on that. Two, I want to thank Commissioner Carey for bringing up, I had no idea what R-two was. And you made it a point to say we're going to put eight and not higher. Appreciate that, totally calmed me down the whole day. So that was good. Also, the mention was that they want to have homes for people and they don't want to have rentals. I didn't mention how they're going to do that. We have a problem in, in our homeowners association, Greenside Vistas, you know, one guy owns nine homes and he's got them rented out. So if we want to make massive changes to the homeowners association, we never have a quorum. Because we don't have, we don't have the votes to do it. So if they do have rentals in there, then they can't have a homeowners association that functions. And then the last thing, my wife told me to tell you, there's beautiful trees on that property. Habitat for Falcons, we had one eagle last, not this winter, last winter that we spotted up in there. So I don't know what their plans are for these gorgeous trees. That's it. Thank you for your time, I appreciate, commission is not a thankful job, so I appreciate your efforts.
I agree with you on the trees. I hate to see them go.
Thank you.
You should have seen the trees where his house was.
Next, in opposition, not wishing to speak is Laura Mahaffey. Comment is, I do not support Elfers annexation, file number A N N X twenty-four dash ten. Next is Karen Olson in opposition, she did not mention whether she wants to speak or not. She does not want to speak. She says, I oppose R-two zone, please keep it to single-family. Next is Deb Thomas. Next is Deb Thomas in opposition, does wish to speak. Ms. Thomas, you've got, please state your name and address for the record, and you've got four minutes.
Sure. Deb Thomas, I'm at three eight four West Blanton Avenue, and I highly oppose this development. There's nothing in our whole neighborhood that supports this as being compatible at all. I, I guess we're too far away from the other development to have gotten a notice to comment on that. But one of you stated you're surprised more people didn't comment on the size of the lots. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. But our development has, through the planning managers, said that our lots average seventy-four hundred square feet. The lots to the north are minimum seventy-eight hundred to half an acre. None of this new development is compatible to any of that. We need to keep it R-one, detach, single-family, and keep the lot sizes at a minimum compatible to our lots on Blanton. And otherwise, you're going to have way too much traffic, too many people, too many, way too many cars. I've been to two traffic planning with the county, and they keep wondering how they're going to handle all the traffic. Well, you keep building higher-density properties, and then you wonder how the traffic is going to work. And you're forcing the, these developments force the traffic down through our smaller developments, smaller roads. And I just, I'm, I'm very upset about this. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next, in opposition, not wishing to speak, and I'm going to uger this one. Ren Fugelstedt, I think? I'm having a hard time reading the writing on that one. He says, we bought the land and built our house in a totally R-one zone subdivision. I disagree changing the zoning, it's not right for those who are already there. This is not only area that could be developed, zone R-two, the same concept could be done elsewhere. That is not yet zoned, we have a great diversity in our neighborhood. Okay. Next is Travis Ostland in opposition wishing to speak. Mr. Ostland, please state your name and address for the record, and you've got four minutes.
Travis Ostland, thirty-six ten North Guy Road. So I live right, if I can find it. I live right on the, the adjacent, geez, that's touchy. So this lot right here is mine. I take a, my backyard, well, from my front to backyard takes up roughly a third of what's being proposed or being annexed. I asked for it to stay R-one. I, I did notice that the lots along that, along that property, or along the fence line there are a little bit larger, which is, makes me feel a little better. But having, having these, I can't even find it. The, the houses, the, the houses that are being proposed, I mean, those lots are, what, probably forty, maybe fifty feet wide? Looks like single, single-car garage. There's already issues, if you go up on Tennessee and Whiskey Flats area, with, those roads are nowhere near wide enough. You have people, and they're two-car garages, these ones are being proposed as one-car garages, what it appears to look like. With that being said, all through Whiskey Flats, you have people, just, everybody just parks on, on the street. And through Deb's neighborhood, this, this, the gal that just spoke, all through theirs, they park on the, out on the street. Through, on Tennessee, you cannot even get, if they're lined up with cars on the road, you cannot pass two cars simultaneously. You have to pull over, let somebody go by, and then get back at it. This is, the, these tighter, tighter homes and stuff is going to bring huge issues to that, unless these streets are way widened, which then is taking up some of their, the amount of homes that they're wanting to put in there. I'm, also, I'm not sure, I guess maybe during rebuttal you can bring that up, but, so on the, on the, this one that we're speaking of is Eller?
Elfers.
Elfers. So is that Guy Road going to cut through and go through the, the previous one that we spoke about as well? So you're going to tie in Guy to, or not Guy, but it would be coming off of Guy over to Spokane Street? So you'd have one there, and then, and then also bringing Tennessee in? If you're bringing Tennessee in right near Brookie, which is, I mean, as you, we talked about, there was, there was somebody that, a couple of kids died there. It's, Brookie is about sixty feet or so from the railroad tracks. And then, and there's not that much more, so then you're going to have another one? Brookie only ha, is one way, it doesn't have people coming out. I, I would suspect the railroad may have some input on some of this. There's going to be a lot of traffic right there if you're having two more, two more enter, enter and exits into these neighborhoods on Spokane Street. And, I mean, as it is, we already have tons of people that live in Whiskey Flats that come down Ashworth, or, sorry, not Ashworth, Fisher. I live, basically you run into my home right at the end of, at the end of Fisher where it's Guy Road. And, I mean, people just race through there, it's, I just, yeah, I oppose, I just oppose. I, I mean, obviously, I get that, that you guys want to infill some of these places. I think the city needs to do more on infrastructure prior to some of this stuff. And, yeah, that's kind of where I stand, and I think it should stay R-one and keep them small if we are going to allow these infills. And just keep them, just keep it the R-one. I mean, I'm going to have eight, eight, nine, ten homes staring into my backyard, especially two-story homes staring into my backyard. I mean, I'm going to have eight, eight, nine, 10 homes staring into my backyard, especially two-story homes staring into my backyard at all times. That's huge. When I thought I was buying right next to a farm, I wanted to be on property but couldn't be, so I'm as close as I could be to it, and that's no longer going to be. So that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, in opposition, wishing to speak, is Shannon Salantano. Did I get that right? I'll take that as a win for the night.
My name is Shannon Salantano. I own property at 362 West Blanton Avenue, which is right against the Elfrs, however you want to say that. I hope you don't mind me going off of my notes a little bit. I've never been to one of these, so. Thank you very much. I am in direct opposition of this zoning change. As it's been discussed, both Whiskey Flats and Peregrine Place, which is our neighborhood, are zoned R1. And I have concerns regarding traffic and safety of the surrounding residents. I do understand the need for more accessible housing. Myself, when I, I bought this home, I was in one of those things. I am a nurse at Kootenay, and I wanted to be able to own a home. But as Mr. Schlotower has mentioned, I don't believe that this area is the appropriate place for an R2 zoning with eight houses per acre. It does not match the neighborhood surrounding, the area. And to increase our population density would put a strain on our already overburdened infrastructure. Spokane Street also has to handle Crown Point and those high-density apartments, as well as all of those other neighborhoods. Increased noise pollution coupled with the nearby train tracks. And 47 new homes, I believe is what the gentleman mentioned, has the potential of a double amount of that many vehicles. We're talking 94-plus vehicles on these roadways. It seems poorly guided, especially for Spokane Street being a two-lane road. I also would like to quote the gentleman prior, talking about parking. This could mirror Whiskey Flats, where there's vehicles up and down the roads, and it makes a safety concern, especially for those of us driving in off of Chase and Snowplows. You know, Snowplows can't make it around those vehicles very well, and in the winter, it, it's dangerous. And in our neighborhood, up on Tennessee, there's people parking on the roads, and it does, you know, shrink our ability to get in and out of our neighborhood. So adding, you know, this many new homes can make a considerable safety risk, in my personal opinion, especially with our, with our children. The type of housing, like I said, is not, not in the character of our neighborhood or the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think it would affect the aesthetic of our homes and our home values in negative fashion. And I'm sure that many of my neighbors would not disagree. I also don't care for the idea, as the gentleman before me mentioned, about, you know, eight-plus homes being able to be in a two-story and look down on all of our, our backyards. And I don't think anybody here would really enjoy that. The other concern I have, as mentioned, was the existing foliage and greenery. Those beautiful trees are home to red-tailed hawks and many other avian species that would be displaced. And living next to a farm, there are some rodent concerns. And if you take away the ecosystem of the things that take care of those rodents, I think that pestilence could be an issue. So I don't know what the applicant has planned for other greenery. I just strongly urge you to reconsider, and, you know, R1 housing is one thing, but R2 with these two-story, very, very tight homes is, is a concern, and I strongly oppose, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And lastly, we have Elwood Missamore in opposition, wishing to speak. Please state your name and address for the record, and you've got four minutes.
Elwood Missamore at 3660 North Guy Road. I'm not going to repeat a lot that was said, because I agree with everything that's already been said regarding the situation. But I just want you to think, when we have these tiny homes that are going to be built, and I'm all for finding housing for the community. I've served on the Salvation Army board, I'm all part of the housing, trying to find homes for people. But think about what happens when, where's the storage at in these homes? Where do they put their storage? They end up putting their storage in the garage. You see it all the time when you go through here. So their garage is full of storage. They park their cars. We end up having two to three cars per household. Cars are everywhere. And they've already said it, but it's a big impact to the community and the safety of these kids. I don't know how many times in this community, I've lived in Post Falls my whole life, and I'm sitting out there and I see these kids run out, and no one can see them, because all these cars are parked along the street. Right? Because it's going to turn into an apartment complex. Right? And they're already having, they're struggling in finding, finding parking in those places as well, because they have more people living there than supposed to be. I'd also add that that gentleman made a good point when it comes to, how are we going to prevent these from being rented out? Like I stated before, we lived here my whole life. I can, I can take equity out of my house, two of these, and rent them out. So there's just a lot of factors that I would add to it. Just really think about the safety of the kids, what that looks like in the community with all these cars parked along these streets. It is not safe. We have to do something else. I appreciate, we want the tax income, so we can do more in the community, but there's a right place. You said it earlier, and I think that people would have came out if it was better communicated between the first and the second time we went through this. The, the community is concerned about this. And it is talked about. We didn't, I didn't know anything about the first phase, right? So that's why we didn't speak on the first one. This is all in the second one. I speak with passion tonight, because I am nervous for the kids and the safety of the children. I'm for it. I think it's a better spot. There's some, there has to be a better spot in Post Falls to make this work. And it's our jobs to find it, but this spot doesn't work. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that concludes our public comment. Merle, would you like to come back up and rebut?
It's too late, but I should have been up there and speaking on this. It comes across a lot there. Others have mentioned.
Excuse me, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I feel like we have good input, and, you know, people are bringing up valid, valid points. I'm going to try and touch on as many of them as I can. So let's start with, with Mr. Ostland's discussion about Guy Road. I think that's the easiest one to address, or actually, cutting through. So, so yes, again, we're going to have a public road that connects to Guy Road and heads east, you know, connects to Tennessee, and then up to Spokane. You know, the, the, the fact of the matter is, there just has to be an approach on Spokane Street. I've been through this with city staff. Unfortunately, when Greenside Vista's developed, it was at a time when cul-de-sacs were, were popular. I don't know what the right word is there, but in today's development standards, those cul-de-sacs wouldn't have been allowed. It would have been continuity through to the, the pieces that we're discussing tonight. Had that happened, would we need a connection point to Spokane there? Maybe not, probably not. But as it is, if we don't put a connection point on Spokane Street, then all the traffic that, that is generated when this, these properties develop in any form, is going to end up on Tennessee and Guy. And, and that's worse than the alternative. So, so that, I hope addresses that one. But as far as the, the rest of the comments go, I, I heard a lot of things that boil down to, you know, what the density, you know, should and should not be. And, you know, that, that is kind of the crux that, that we're here. We're trying to, to meet a need that we hear over and over again about, you know, affordable housing and, and bringing, you know, a product to the, the market that, that's below the median home value, that can be, you know, attainable for, for people who are being priced out. How do we do that in a way that's compatible with surrounding developments? You know, regardless if it's this development or another development, we've, we've got to find a place for it. And, and what we've tried to do is, is by, by going to that 8.0 units per acre, you know, we're saying, we're, we're creating as much density as we can without exceeding what the city has envisioned. You know, the, the city is not only, you know, doing that to, to create, you know, neighborhoods of similarity, but also because they have to plan for things like traffic. They, they have to project into the future and say, how much traffic are we potentially generating with these undeveloped areas? This is, you know, what's doing that, is, is that, that future land use map. So, so, you know, are, are we creating, you know, that much more, you know, trips per, you know, per day? You know, when we have eight units per acre versus 6.7? There is some, but it is within what the city has contemplated. To that effect, you know, I, I totally understand, you know, you know, people looking at that and saying, well, I, I don't want 8.0 units looking into my backyard. Well, I, and I, I understand, you know, is it really going to be that different if it's 6.7 units looking into your backyard? I mean, that's what R1 allows. So, you know, that's the alternative. 1.3 units per acre on a five-acre piece, that, that's, that's the alternative. So we're trying to find ways that, that don't disrupt entirely what's happening around us. We're trying to be compatible with it. And, and fortunately, you know, here with this, this, these pieces that we're considering tonight, you know, we, we have, you know, connectivity with, through Tennessee and Guy and Spokane. And the configuration is such that, that what we're developing will, will mostly utilize Spokane. I'd say over 90, maybe even 95% of the traffic generated will go out to Spokane versus meandering through Tennessee to Grange to Chase. In fact, we'll take pressure off of Tennessee Avenue, because people who live there will elect to take Spokane versus meandering through that course I just said. So I do see some traffic benefits to this. Let's see if I can find any other notes that, that people brought up. They were good points, and I don't want to discount them. Oh, one person brought up greenery. Both the layouts I brought up tonight did have dedicated open space. I think the first one had 0.6 acres, and the second one had half an acre. So we are, you know, we are, you know, intending to have dedicated open space with these concepts that we're bringing before you tonight. And somebody talked about, like, parking and, and, you know, what the, the product that we brought up had, just a one-car garage. You know, we are definitely willing to entertain a, a two-car garage product. And we'll, we can look at that between now and the city council meeting to see if that's something that maybe we could, we could do on these lots. So it was just a highly conceptual thing. Oh, and a couple of people brought up rental homes, finally. So what I'm trying to say is that, that these applicants, their desire is not to retain these lots. You know, when they put them on the open market, you know, we can work with Paha to, to, you know, make sure that, that, you know, things like that they've put in place at Miracle and Britton happen here, but, you know, you know, what, what, what we can control, what we know for sure, is that this applicant, these applicants don't wish, you know, to turn it into a rental neighborhood for themselves, for their, they, they want to sell it. And that, that's the, the point we're trying to make. So do you have any more questions for me?
Any more questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any more questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Yes?
I have one more public comment.
Yeah. We'll do one more public comment, and Mr. Van Houten, you'll have the opportunity to rebut. And I need your paper when you're done, please.
Okay.
Please state your name.
Absolutely, you have it up there.
Oh, I do? Okay.
I was the one that wasn't going to speak.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm not a public speaker, for sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Ren Fugelstedt, 314 West Blanton. And right now, I should have had that cardiologist this morning. I, I was three hours with a cardiologist, and right now, and my, he's saying, what is your heart doing now? But anyway, we-
We're friendly, I promise.
Yeah, okay. But being in front of people isn't my thing. However, I'm just kind of trembling inside. But, you know, we, we bought the, the land, and my daughter is right next door, and, and built the houses in a, you know, in R1 area. And we do have a very diverse, of course, people coming from all over the country. So diversity isn't the thing. And, but, I have, oh, yeah. So I think, you know, buying and then building, and then to R1, and then they come along, and R1 all around. And so then you put R2 right in the middle. And there certainly has to be space elsewhere in the city if you want an R2 development that is not perhaps zoned yet, or whatever. But I don't think it has to go into, into that area. And then also the taller, taller buildings, and, and the whole works. So, and, yeah, the same, the same concept could be done wherever. And it doesn't have to be squeezed in right in the middle of a designated R1 area. And I think, and, and it could meet, meet the needs of affordability wherever you might develop it. And so, that's about it for right here. But I really disagree with it to this point right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Van Houten, do you have an opportunity to rebut if you'd like?
So, I, I think most of the points I, I made already, you know, still stand. And, you know, I feel like they're, they're bringing up valid points. But again, we're trying our best to, you know, through the request of density, to go from 6.7 to 8.0, to make something that is compatible and not a huge disruption. Is there any further questions for me based on what you heard from him? Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Okay? Close the public hearing? Jump into deliberations.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Before we use Elfr's annexation, file number 24-10, request for an R2 zoning of the 4.89 acres adjacent to the previous discussion property. Criteria number one is the proposed zoning district for R2, consistent with the future land use map and the focused area contained in the currently adopted comprehensive plan.
So, before we get into this, I, I do want to just mention to some of the, the, the public out there that what we're here tonight to do is to recommend a zoning to city council. And the applicant presented some subdivision concepts, and it's really easy to get into the weeds about that. And that, if they're annexed into the city at any zone, and if they come to forward to subdivide, there will be another public hearing for that at that point in time. We're not here tonight to talk about anything that's related to a subdivision. It is strictly zoning. So it's really important that, so you'll hear, our conversation tonight will be directed towards that part of it, not necessarily any subdivision stuff that was brought up kind of as candy, if you will, to look at. But that's not the substance of what we're doing tonight. So, and, so, thank you.
No, that, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And the public, public should understand that as well. Again, it's a zoning recommendation to council. That's the only thing that the applicant has brought forward to this point. And the commission's review is, is limited by our code to a certain criteria. So again, you want to repeat number one?
Oh, no, you did. This is the first criteria of the three?
Yes, sir.
So.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is consistent with our future land map and the focus area in the, that we've adopted in the comprehensive plan.
I question the zone choice. I understand that the R2 is an implementing zone for the low-density residential use as defined in the comp plan. But when you look at what the intent of the R2 zone is, I think that I'm, I'm struggling to see how that it complies with our comp plan. I think that I'm, I'm struggling to see how that it complies with our comp plan. Specifically, the R2 zone is, my understanding, is for residential structures containing one or more dwelling units, and it is for areas that are readily serviced by collector and arterial streets. And if we're looking at this in isolation, this one parcel, not the whole development, this parcel is not serviced by an artillery, arterial, is that how I say that? Or collector street. It's, it's only serviced by a two-lane side street, residential street. So that, that's my concern. I'm not sure if that falls under this particular review criteria or not, but that's my concern.
Okay.
Can you speak to that, Ray? What are you saying there about the arterial?
Um, I think that's generally higher density is, is limited towards the high, higher classification roads, so anything over the low-density residential threshold of eight units per acre would typically be-
Is he speaking towards one of the goals?
So, yeah, so when it comes to, so medium-density residential, which is, would typically kind of be the R2 comp plan designation, which there isn't a whole lot of, that seems to be, those are typically right along a collector or an arterial.
So am I, am I mixing the two, the R2 from the comp plan versus the R2 from zoning?
Um, I mean, so I think you might be mixing medium-density residential and the comp plan to, but maybe not, I don't know.
But they're asking for R2.
I mean, they're, they're asking for R2, and that's a-
To, to make the lots smaller than the R1, we, we can still condition this one the same way, single-family detached homes.
Mm-hmm, with a maximum of eight per acre.
With a maximum of eight per acre. The R2 is so they could have the smaller, little smaller lots without the density.
And I'm just looking to our land use designation descriptions, and specifically that R2 is designate, or says that it's supposed to be for areas serviced by collector and arterial streets. So I'm just, that's my concern.
Sure.
That's a good point.
That's a good point. The Central Prairie focus area does talk about a variety of housing types.
Yes.
And so smaller lot, single family is one of those things that does provide a blend. It's not duplexes, it's not townhomes.
Yeah.
And so I think-
If the condition that we put on it is accepted.
Right, right, if, if council accepts that as well, so, and that's, that's something we have to look at here with regards to the comprehensive plan. Bobby, do you have any thoughts with regards to the comp plan?
No, this is, this is R2 light. This isn't R2. So, I mean, all the opposition out here, they keep, you keep talking R2, R2, this isn't really R2. This is just a house and a third, so they can make the houses a little bit more affordable. Today, people just cannot buy houses. Post Falls has a housing crisis. Your kids cannot go out and buy a starter home. So, I mean, just a half a million dollar home is like a Cracker Box. In ten years, my house went up in value, not what it, it costs, but up in value a million dollars. I couldn't even buy my house now. So this little thing they're asking for, one house and a third, I think that's a very good idea. Gives them the, the ability to, to drop the prices a little bit so some people can get in a house. I have people all the time asking me for rentals, and I just, where do they go? So if this was just straight up R2, I, I would vote against it.
Okay. Okay. Criteria number two, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comp plan that are relevant to the area under consideration? We just discussed a little bit of that.
We did.
Yeah.
But if you, feel free to expand on that one as well.
I have the same, I, I find this one difficult. I have the same, same quandary as, as before. I understand the, the intent. Hopefully our recommendations for conditions are considered by council, but I don't know what's a reasonable expectation from a person that buys a home in, in the, in the city. I certainly don't think it's reasonable to expect that because you bought a home next to a farm, it'll, that the farm will stay a farm because the lot that you built your house on was at one point a farm, and now you live there and we're glad to have you in the city, and, so I don't think that's a reasonable expectation, but is it reasonable to expect that the, the product that will be built on that newly annexed city island will be comparable to what you have? I kind of think that's a reasonable expectation that they expect from us when they buy their home. So is this compatible? Well, it's pretty close, but not exactly. But times are changing, and it is a lot more expensive to build a house, and it is harder for people to get houses, so it's a tough one.
I do think we have a lot of homogeneous housing that our, our zoning map has got a whole lot of yellow on it, and those are all sixty-five hundred square foot lots or larger, and, you know, we do need, I, I do, the comp plan does speak towards a variety of housing, meeting, you know, goal seventeen, or seven in policy fifteen talk about future housing needs, and I do think that this does have the potential to provide for those future housing needs. And Bobby, I think you spoke to that just a little bit ago, is the future housing needs and affordability, and so goal seven and policy fifteen really speak to that, and I think this does meet that criteria. Joe Kibbe, do you have any thoughts on this?
Nothing else, no.
No, I think it's-
I think it, there's a need, a definite need, and I, I agree, if it was strictly R2, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want that there.
I agree.
But I think this is a need that, you know, with the conditions that we put on it, the extra conditions.
And if we're looking at R1 at sixty-five hundred square foot lots, that's thirty-two units for this parcel. If we're looking at R2 at four thousand square foot lots, we're looking at thirty-nine units. So we're talking a difference of, what do we got? Seven homes?
Yep.
Okay. Assuming my math is right.
Okay. Shall we go on to the next criteria?
Yes, sir. But also, point out, there was some discussion about preserving and the adjacent right-of-way on this, or the zoning district. There was some discussion about Guy Road being currently only X amount of feet, looking at the proposal. The annexation supports, I think some of the goals and policies, policy twenty-four talks about preserving and improving the adjacent right-of-way, which we really didn't talk about for improving connectivity, but it may be a consideration as well. Finally, number three, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services?
There was an unnoted in the packets.
Yeah, and again, I, I didn't hear any testimony to the con, to the contrary on that issue.
No.
Correct. So thank you, commissioners.
Okay. Do you have any more discussion before we motion?
I was in favor of the R2 for the, the piece that fronts Spokane. I'm not in favor for the one that is fronting to a small, single-family street, if we're looking at these in isolation.
I, and I agree with him, and I, I'm not going to be in support, in favor of it, primarily because I want it to be presented to city council as non-unanimous and them to weigh the merits of the, of the application and the concerns that folks have.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? All entertained a motion?
You better try.
This is a complicated one, I don't know.
And there are four conditions, by the way, on the staff report.
There are.
Plus the two additional ones.
Commissioners, the water reference is duplicated, so I think we have five total conditions.
Pardon?
Five total conditions?
The four in the staff report, and then the one with the eight units per acre and-
Detached.
Detached only?
I think there's only two in the staff report, and then-
Are we moving?
There's, there's four in staff.
Does the staff include the septic sanitor and the other one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, number three is existing septic systems will be required to be decommissioned. Number four is the granting of water rights.
Okay, so this is a lot simpler. It's those four plus the two.
Right. Thank you.
So we're doing this one here? Approval?
Yeah. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second, yeah.
All right, I will. I move to recommend approval of, sorry, Elfris' annexation and ANNX dash twenty-four dash ten, finding that the requested zoning meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code eighteen dot twenty dot one hundred as outlined in our deliberation. Taking into consideration items one through four in the staff report and adding that maximum eight units per acre and all be single-family detached homes, and recommend direct staff to prepare a zoning recommendation to be provided to the city council.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll have a second.
We have a motion and a second. A roll call vote, please.
Carrie. Carrie?
Oh, Carrie, I'm sorry. Yeah, yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Schlatt Howard?
No.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
No.
Walton?
Yes.
Okay. On to the next item on the agenda. Just administrative staff reports.
Yeah, quick reminder, on the twenty-seventh, we have another P and Z meeting.
Okay.
It's gonna be a special meeting. I know, you had two public, two nights, but yeah, it's an additional P and Z meeting. We normally have one the second Tuesday of every month, but on the February twenty-seventh, we'll have that-
Special in any other way?
What's that?
Is it special in any other way or just because it's two?
It's just two.
Well, and it makes your March agenda a lot lighter, so it's a little special that way.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take it.
What's the incentive to go to the meeting?
You don't have a longer agenda in March.
What, what is the, what is today?
What's in it for us?
What was today? National one day, we didn't get any of that.
Yeah, we've stopped doing that for a spell here.
Okay. Uh, any commissioner comments? For the go-to-the-order. Do you speak up?
Go-to-the-order.
Anything for the go-to-the-order?
Move to adjourned.
So adjourned.